Come to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May you, which please call, roll.
Rainer Horst, here, Butler.
Here.
Carlstone.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Dan Stryland.
Here.
Deion Isak.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the tentative agenda.
So move.
For Brandon Horst and Stryland, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, may please call roll.
Rainer Horst, yes. Dan Stryland.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. I'm gonna be reading a proclamation honoring Michael Norman, a longtime city employee. Before I do that, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of his family here. So his daughter Haley is here with her husband and son-in-law Patrick and their four children, Taylan, Ava, Kinzerly, and Peyton. Mike's son, Brandon, lives in Washington State. I don't think he's, we thought he maybe be on the phone, but I don't think he is. And Aletha is also here this evening. And so I'm gonna read the proclamation and then present it to the family. So proclamation from the office of mayor, proclamation honoring Michael Norman. Whereas Michael Norman began employment with the City of Pella's Electric Department on June 3rd, 1994, and whereas during Mike's tenure with the City of Pella, he was promoted several times, most recently to the position of Electric Operations Superintendent. And whereas Mike was a vital part of the City of Pella's long-term power plant supply and personally oversaw the decommissioning of the city's coal power plant. And whereas Mike's expertise was integral to sharing a successful transition to the city's power supply contract with Missouri River Energy Services. And whereas Mike's knowledge and expertise included complex environmental issues. And whereas Mike was a natural leader dedicated to teaching his team through his example. And whereas the Electric Department as a whole, especially the Diesel Plant, will forever be positively impacted by the effect that Mike displayed through the work he had accomplished and the strong and devoted work ethic exhibited. And whereas the City of Pella wishes to acknowledge the commitment which Mike put forth during his deployment. I now therefore I don't award Mayor of Pella on behalf of the Pella City Council and citizens of Pella do hereby recognize Mike Norman for his 29 years of service to the City of Pella and stated March 5, 2024. So to the family, on behalf of Mayor and Cert, I express sympathies for the loss of Mike. I did know him personally, but I've heard a lot about him, and are very positive. So he did a great job working for the City of Pella. So you have our sympathies and all you beautiful grandchildren. I know you're gonna miss your grandpa a bit. So we want to present you with this and wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Matter of four well-behaved young. Okay, we will move on to acceptance of civil service certified list of police lieutenant candidates. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board and those for those also welcome to the viewers at home that are watching on Pella Fiber this evening. As Mayor Ward stated, what this is, is a proposed acceptance of the certified tenant list. And recently as background on this, the fellow civil service commission recently certified the following two candidates on this. And with this, I'm looking for Chief McShayee, and if not, I'll ask Captain Hossi if they're chief. If you'd like to add any context or background on this for the council. But before we turn it over to chief or some additional input on this, it's important to note, by accepting the list, what this authorizes is Chief McShayee is to hire either one of these individuals who are extremely qualified for this position as lieutenant to the Pella Police Department.
So I've just. Yeah, this is better. So I'd just like to add, we're very fortunate here at the Police Department to have such a tenured representation, qualified officers willing to step up and fill this leadership position. I was extremely pleased. Extremely pleased. I wasn't, I was extremely pleased with the process. The test results were extremely close and overall I think either are well-suited. So I'm gonna have a tough decision to make.
Okay, all right. So I entertain a motion for approval. Hopkins, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, may please call roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. This time we have opportunity for a public forum. Anyone wishing to address council regarding any agenda item, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. All right. If you would like to address council, please come forward to the mic and give us your name and address.
Hi, my name's Ed Van Appel. I live at, excuse me, 1404 West First for 54 years. And part of the, my problem is living there. I have a very large sycamore tree on my front yard. I also live on a hill. So when I look up into that sycamore, I do not see succaeas. I see turkey vultures. It's becoming really, really problematic tonight. I'm saying SOS, I need your help desperately. I do not want to live through 40 a night. My neighbors and I count 40 turkey vultures on my tree in the evening. And someone gave me the information yesterday saw them return. So it's a health hazard, I think, because I taught school for 40 years, but I have not taught these turkey vultures how to use the bathroom. They defecate unbelievably. You can imagine 40 of them up there for eight, nine hours. It's a health hazard, I think. I would not allow my grandchildren to play on my front yard. And my neighbors looking at me like, what are you gonna do about it? Because the odor is bad. The odor becomes extremely bad. So if you can help me on that, I'd be extremely pleased. Thank you.
Chief, you guys need some target practice?
So it's a federal protected bird.
Hello, as the mayor knows, I've been involved in the process for a little, a little time now. And what we've been doing just simply is a short-term solution. So I don't know the long-term solution. You know, wildlife management is not my, you know, my cup of tea. But I can confirm that there are a lot of birds in that tree.
Okay, anyone else?
Cindy Atkins, 1330 Boone Street in Pella, and also Executive Director of the Pella Opera House. So we have something in Pella to look forward to every May. I know you're all thinking the Tulip Festival, but I just want to add that today on your agenda is a proposal from the Pella Opera House to add another event in May. A couple weeks later, not requiring as much work from our community as the festival, but an opportunity for us all to come together and celebrate music and the arts out in the street in front of the Pella Opera House on Franklin Street. And I just hope that you've had time to look through the proposal and be able to consider it tonight as an opportunity for us as a community to come together, to celebrate, to have an evening of just fun and hopefully wonderful weather and let the Opera House bring our show outside into the street for a night.
Alicia Helm, 401 South Market in Osceola. First, I'm sure you're aware that the Mahaska County Supervisors signed a letter that they have sent to the Iowa DOT in opposition to what the City of Osceola is trying to do with the annexation plans they report. It goes to far as to say the annexation is legally questionable. They mentioned the City Development Board cannot approve annexation unless, quote, "the city will be able to provide to the territory substantial municipal services and benefits not previously included by such territory." And that the motive for annexation is not solely to disintegrate within the city. Isn't that the main reason besides building an airport? Not to mention the action of the SDRAA are stressing the relationships between the Osceola and the Mahaska County Supervisors. Second concerns the aforementioned SDRAA and the city. The SDRAA has targeted 60 days to modify their 20AD agreement based on an open meetings complaint filed with the Iowa Public Information Board. It's long overdue that it needs updates, but I'm encouraging this city to remove themselves from the 20AD. It's very obvious that those landlords have no desire to sell their land and Osceola has said that they won't use eminent domain. You can say it's on the back burner all you want, but how about taking it off the back burner and just admitting defeat and move on and use the money for stuff that will actually benefit everyone? Not to mention you can fix your airport to make it more functional with the money the FAA might give you. If you're not going to disband the SDRAA, then you should be holding them accountable. Because if you don't, you can be sure the citizens of Mahaska and Marion County will.
Anyone else?
Chelsea Metron, 2329 Lucas Drive. I am here tonight on behalf of Beth Dearking of Iris Coffee. Dear City Council members, I'm writing to express my concerns regarding the potential arrival of corporate chains such as Starbucks to our beloved community of Pella. As the owner of Iris Coffee, I deeply value the diversity and uniqueness of our local marketplaces, which contribute to the charm and the character of this city. While I understand we cannot prevent large chains from entering our town, I believe that it is within our power to choose not to incentivize them with the assistance of road and infrastructure developments. Our community thrives on the hard work and the dedication of local business owners who continually strive to enhance the customer experience and foster a sense of belonging in this very town. Pella's beauty lies within our vibrant local economy, fueled by individuals who pour their hearts and their souls into their businesses. By supporting and protecting these local entrepreneurs, we preserve the essence of our community and uphold the values that we say we hold so dear. I urge you, as esteemed members of the City Council, to prioritize the interests of our community by refraining from offering incentives that would facilitate the expansion of corporate chains in our community. Let us continue to showcase Pella as a unique and thriving destination driven by the passion and innovation of its local businesses. Thank you for your attention to this matter, and I look forward to your thoughtful consideration and action in preserving the integrity of Pella's local marketplace. Beth Dearking, owner of Iris Coffee.
Good evening. I'm reading for Michelle Gritters. She could not be here tonight, she had a photo shoot. I'm Michelle Gritters, and I'm the Vice President of the Downtown Business District, owner of Nine Lila's Boutique and a photo studio in downtown Pella. These are both very competitive businesses. Competition can and has made me better. However, by Google's account, we have eight dedicated coffee shops in Pella. This doesn't include the many restaurants, eateries, food trucks that offer smoothies and other coffee options. By comparison, other towns of similar size have just two to four coffee shops, mostly two. By these numbers alone, it doesn't make sense to add another coffee shop. Maybe it would be needed if there was a lack of coffee available in a specific part of town. However, they are spread out nicely across town. While there may be some perks to adding a Starbucks name to our town, we need to ask ourselves, would the benefits outweigh the risk of losing other small, family-owned businesses, our neighbors, our friends that have invested in Pella? Owning a small shop in Pella is not a gagerich plan. We do not get huge retirements, HSAs, months of vacation time, or large salaries. And that's fine. We do it because we love our community and our daily guests. We wake up beaming with pride to go to work and serve you. Please don't risk these local coffee shops by bringing in a large corporation who as of writing this has nearly 40,000 locations. They don't need us and we don't need them.
All right, good evening, elected officials. My name is Amber Mockenhop. I'm the owner of Big Assai on the west side of the Pella Square. I've lived in Pella for over 14 years. I've raised my three kids here. I worked in Pella schools for a significant amount of time, and now I work at my little store every day. Pella is known as the land of refuge. In the English dictionary, that defines the condition of being safe or sheltered from pursuit of danger or trouble. I'm here to tell you that bringing a shark to a pool is trouble. When I opened my little store four years ago, every last penny I had in my pocket went into opening my doors on July 1, 2020. Even in the midst of COVID, I was not scared. You wanna know why? Because I believed in Pella. I believe in the downtown. I believe in the we support small businesses. I believed in the we shop local. I believe that city officials like yourselves knew that if they didn't have the quaint, unique, small businesses that they had, they didn't have anything different than any other small town in the Midwest. I believe that I'd make it because I believed Pella believed in small-town values, small-town living, small shopping, and keeping it local. Now we are faced with a shark, a shark that could very well be the demise of some of us. This shark is Starbucks. Contrary to what some people may think, Starbucks is not a franchise such as myself. They are not locally owned and operated. They do not play here, spend here, worship here, attend sporting events here. The shareholders of this corporation have probably never even been to Pella, Iowa. They are not small-town, they are not small-town values, they are not small-town living. They are a shark in our pool. I've been told that the city does not have any say whether large corporation and large corporate entities comes to Pella or not. It's a business enterprise. I don't know if any of that's true. I don't know how that works. That's not my wheelhouse, but I can tell you this. If you invite them, fund them, make it easy for them by providing infrastructure that they need, that speaks volumes to the small businesses in the community that have put their blood, sweat, tears, and money back into your community. According to the New York Times, since 2020, 400,000 small businesses have closed their doors. Cost of goods is suffocating us, in the cases increasing over 200% over the last three years. Shipping and distribution have more than doubled in the past three years. Some of us are barely keeping our heads above water. We're trying to stay afloat in a crumbling economy. And now we are being handed a brick instead of a life preserver. I beg you to keep the dozens and dozens of small business owners in our little community in mind when making this decision. I'll say it again, a shark does not belong in our pool. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on. Any motion approval, for approval of the consent agenda?
So move.
Brandon Horst, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, may please call roll.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Special permit request for Pella Opera House Outdoors, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for brief presentation on the side of. As Mayor Ward stated, this request comes to us tonight from the Pella Opera House. And specifically what they're looking for is a special event permit to open an outdoors party, the Opera House Outdoors, on Friday, May 17, 4 to 10:30 PM. In the event of inclement weather, the event would be held on Saturday, May 18. And we do have a description of the event as well. And it's important to note that they are requesting closure of Franklin Street from Main Street to East First Street. We'll go with that here very shortly. So let's go ahead. Yep, we're ready here as well. So we do have schematic design of the special event location as well. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now as far as on the agenda this evening, we do have a resolution in which we close Franklin Street from Main Street to East First Street from 6 AM to 11:45 PM on the day of the event. It is important also to note that the promoter will work with Pella Police Department as far as the pre-closure is concerned. Now as far as city staff review, all pertinent departments have reviewed the application this evening that be had been received. However, we are recommending conditional approval of this special event in depending on receipt of corporate certificate of insurance. The promoter applying for the necessary alcohol license with the state of Iowa and the City Council, also approval of alcohol licenses will split them. As Mayor, that includes staff's presentation. Be willing to answer any questions the council may have on the side of.
All right, thank you, Mike. Any motion for approval? Brandon Horst, Dan Stryland, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, may please call roll.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Quick question. Sorry, I missed the discussion piece. Has insurance been filed or is there a warrant or opportunity yet for this?
So they, it is, the approval will be conditional upon receiving that.
Yes.
And it's my understanding that, as I said, you can correct me if I'm wrong. You wanted to go through this process first, and then the liquor license piece will come next. We'll check that.
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
The motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6667, entitled Resolution Temporarily Closing Public Ways or Grounds in Connection with a Special Event Known as Pella Opera House Outdoors. Any motion? Do we need to do any more? Okay, any motion for approval? Hopkins, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, may please call roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Dan Stryland?
Yes.
Rainer Horst?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 661, 6661, entitled Resolution Order in Construction of Pella Indoor Recreation and Climate Center, fixing a date for the year and their own, and taking bids therefore. This resolution was tabled on February 2024 until the City Council meeting on April 2, 2024. So there's no action to be taken tonight. Moving on, resolution number 6668, entitled Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Development Agreement Bide Between the City of Pella and Pella Retail Management LLC. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Ward stated, what this resolution would do is approve a development agreement of Pella Retail Management Group. And specifically, it's important to keep in mind that this proposed development agreement is for proposed off-site public improvements for the development or actually the upgrade of West Knight Street as well sanitary sewer extension to the site. Equally important to note that this is the same agreement that we discussed on February 6th as well. Now the proposed tenants for the site that's located here, and to just orientate everyone, Washington Street is located right here. The highlighted section of West Knight Street is right here is the green highlighted area. If you were to drive out there today, what you would find is a partial gravel road and also somewhat of an asphalt overlay on segments of this portion of the street. Portion of the street is 100% within the city limits. And it's also equally important to note through the years, the City Council has discussed or had as far as discussions as far as upgrading this road and extending it all the way up to St. Mary's Catholic Church as well. So the section of road improvements has been previously discussed by the City Council. Now as far as the proposed tenants for the development agreement here will be Starbucks and T-Mobile. And a little bit of background on the legislative process. The planning of zoning commission conditionally approved the site plan for this development. And it was subject to the City Council approving the development agreement, which would directly address the off-site plan improvements for the development. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now as far as the summary of the agreement, what the developer is responsible for is to construct all onsite improvements. So this is the proposed site plan for the development that we have located there. They're responsible for everything within their property boundaries. They're also going to have to extend the sanitary sewer system to their site as well. And then they'd also be required to reimburse the city up to $220,000, $220,000 towards the cost of the upgrade of West Knight Street. Now as far as the city's responsibility in this matter is we would actually perform the West Knight Street property upgrade. And what we would do is we upgrade the current road to a regulation city street that's commonly referred to as an urban cross-section. The total cost of that would be $440,000, $440,000. And the project would be funded, our share of the project would be funded by the road use tax fund. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. As we stated, the segmented street and actually this proposed upgrade has been previously discussed by the City Council through the years. And what this development agreement would do would at least address the city portion of West Knight Street, 218th Avenue on here, which is the green highlighted portion of this. The developer would be reimbursing the city for the portion of the street which abus their site as well. And then in addition, the developer would also be responsible for extending sanitary sewer, the city's sanitary sewer system through their site as well. Now finally, Mr. Mayor, based on previous direction, the fellow City Council staff is recommending approval of the development agreement this evening. And this also concludes the staff presentation. So be willing to answer any questions the council may have on the side of.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? Hopkins, Carlstone, discussion?
Have we, has the Catholic Church reached out to us again as we head into this budget session about the paving of the road? Have we heard from them again?
Yeah, yeah. I, with this budget session, I was actually contacted last fall by the Catholic Church on that. And I know there has been discussions and interest in me ever seeing those discussions. So I have been contacted last fall by the church.
All right, thank you.
And I was at the fish fryer Friday. Yeah, it's delicious, you should go.
Okay.
And they had basically everybody coming through line. They were asking to sign a petition to pave the road.
Oh.
So they're, so they're mobilizing and working on it. I talked to a former gentleman there and said they're sending that to the City of Pella. So I was just asking.
Thank you.
One thing, one thing that I want. This is, this is a tough, it's a tough issue because I know Casey and Beth and I care about them. And it's hard to, it's hard to decouple a developer, working with a developer, to let a developer pay for half of the street that needs to be paved and not think that we're subsidizing competition. That's the, that's the hard issue at play here. And what it really comes down to is this is a street that, one, I mean, how, we had this discussion not too long ago at the council, less than a few months ago. What are we gonna do with this street? And I, I believe there's other development in the works down the, down the street as well.
What are you doing? That. Sorry.
It's, this is, this is a great opportunity to start the process that we already know that we're gonna have to spend the money on for the street, independent of who the tenants are in the building, independent of what the businesses are in the building. This is, this is an opportunity, and we're not gonna get a better opportunity than this than a developer paying for half the street. We, in the last few years, since, since my time on council, the city has paid for fully, how many gravel roads, Lynn? Several, fully. Where's, yeah, where's Danny? We've paid for, out to my development, Prairie Street by Lynn.
Right.
Monroe, Monroe Street. And those, those were fully paid for by the city. This is an opportunity to let somebody who wants to bring economic development to the town pay for part of it. So if we're indeed about improving our city streets, then if we can have developers pitch in and pay for it, then by all means, let's, let's do it. Holding the intention of, that's inevitably gonna bring competition to some business. What are that business paying you?
So I know there, I heard a question in the comments that we can't keep anybody out out in units. Question was, is that true? Or you didn't know if that's true? That's absolutely true. We cannot tell people, we can't say who can come and who can't come to our community. As long as they come and they live under our codes, there's, there's nothing we can do. And I think if you really stop and think about it, I don't think anybody wants to live in a world where just because Pella doesn't want a certain business, we would have the ability to say, we don't want you. You, you're, you would be asking a governmental unit to say to private industry, we don't want you here. And so I think we have to keep that in mind. And Dave, I think, explained pretty well. Historically, Pella has not expected its citizens to pay for new streets. Most communities don't do that. If you put in a new street, there are assessments made. And we know that this street is going to be, uh, need to be completed. And as he said, for us to be able to get at this section of it, half of it paid for, that's not something we normally have. So it's, uh, and trust me, I was in CPA business in Pella for a long time. I worked with many small businesses. I know someone said they're not a get rich quick scheme. Oh, boy, are they not? People work extremely hard, I understand that. But I think this is an opportunity for us to get some infrastructure and with the help of it, or paying for half of it. If you think about it, it's a two-lane road. They're paying for their half of the road, we're paying for ours.
I would make one comment that everybody that goes to Starbucks is going to have to drive there. And many of the coffee shops are downtown, and a lot of people can walk to downtown. So, you know, you've got an edge on that side of it. And I, I can understand the concern about the competition, but, um, everybody's got to drive there. And a lot of people, you've got a lot of people that walk downtown. A lot of business that walks into town. It's not easy.
West Knight Street to the Catholic Church, some of that is in city limits, some of that is outside city limits. So therefore, some, all of the city limit portion will enter the yard. The responsibility and the county portion, the county portions, that 50/50, if I recall, between, like, Lancaster Street, reminding of...
Yeah, the best way to look at it, we have to look at excluding this, but when we looked at basically from Washington Street up to St. Mary's prior to this proposed development, about half of it was going to the site of the city limits and half was at Monroe, Marion County. So by leaving our segment, this is the 100%. That takes care of the portion of the city's responsibility.
Well, that's what my next question was, what percent of this West Knight is in the city's 50% of the entirety?
Dr. Carlstone, I apologize, I don't happen to have that here, but we'd be happy to give that, provide that to you.
Because obviously, this, this is on your agenda, uh, of our portion of our citizenry attends church there, where, you know, the negative about living and driving on gravel, et cetera. So this is on our agenda. And, you know, it seems to do a 50% decrease. I'm not natively that someone, I'm an ancestral, you know? That seems to be like magic to hedge the zeters. So I, I think, I think David and Mayor, I think John did competitions of, um, if we could blind ourselves to what's going on in the purple, whoever's going to do the purple is going to pay for half of the infrastructure to it. I think that helps us remove the bias to what the decision tonight is really about. And that is the city's responsibility of the infrastructural pieces. And we're talking about that, that nauseam idea about that's our responsibility. So to be able to do it at a stale price, excuse the logic of it. Um, I do, uh, I think competition just in general is healthy for everybody in a biological system, in a competitive marketplace. And I, and I will still go to, I'll say, and I'll still take my kids to Smokey Road, and I will still walk downtown. John said pretty important. I mean, people are not coming to Pella Island to stop at Starbucks and rap to the square. They're coming to the square. So our, that's aside, let's blind ourselves to what's going on in the purple. Our city responsibility is infrastructural piece, and we'll do it at 50% on it.
That's very good.
Okay, anything else? All right, we're going to vote. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Miranda Horse?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on, resolution number 6669 entitled resolution setting time and place for a public hearing for the purpose of considering the proposed tax levy for the city's fiscal year 2024-25 budget. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for presentation on this item. As Mayor Ward stated, what we're entertaining tonight is permission to establish April 2nd at noon as the public hearing date for the city's maximum property tax levy. This is a new legislative requirement by the state of Iowa for this fiscal year. So we're going to talk about FY 24-25. That is the fiscal year that would start on July 1st, 2024, and extend through June 30th, 2025. It is important to note, um, on March 25th and the 26th, the council does have scheduled budget work sessions to discuss the FY 24-25 budget as well as associated five-year capital improvement plan. Now, with that, our job prior to that meeting, what the state is requiring is that cities publish the maximum possible property tax levy that they could levy for FY 24-25. Does not mean that the city will levy it, and it does not authorize or obligate the city to levy what's being proposed on this as well. So when you look at it through that lens on it, now, staff is proposing, we discussed this on February 6th as well, actually February 20th, excuse me, was that the proposed maximum property tax levy is viewed as, is really a means that could give the city flexibility in considering options for the 2024-25 budget. And with that, what we're proposing and what we discussed on February 20th was establishing a maximum levy rate at $1.30. And this was an increase over the city's current levy rate, $10.20, which has been that for approximately 21 years on it. The reason for the increase is really driven down to two items. A is the operational increase that we've had, and that's mainly associated with Pella Community Ambulance. The city did take over the ambulance two years ago. It's an excellent service, it's an essential service for the city of Pella. And at that time, we absorbed it within our current rates on that as well. If we were to look at that amount that we took over with it, is we have a subsidy of about $600,000 associated with the ambulance. The second item that we have is we've experienced significant increases in our property and liability insurance for the city, for the city, and that's been similar to other cities across the state of Iowa as well. And so when you look at the operating portion, it would be 77 cents, and the debt service, actually, the debt service levy increase would be approximately 33 cents. Let's go ahead and talk about the debt service levy if we could. And once again, I want to stress, this does not obligate the city to have $1.30 as far as your maximum, as far as your property tax levy. It just gives you the flexibility if you choose to do so, if you can, on it. But with the debt service levy, they would be associated with these particular projects that we have here, and these would be options that would be available to the city council if you chose to establish the debt maximum tax levy rate at $1.30. But once again, we covered the ambulance, health insurance, and of course, with this here, not of course, but it's just a fact, we do have, we are facing state funding cuts as well, as, as associated with the 2025 budget. So Mandy, let's go ahead, please. And I believe we've covered most of these items. I want to stress once again, all we're doing with this resolution is establishing April 2nd at noon as our public hearing date for the maximum property tax levy. That will be after our budget work sessions, and it's very likely that the total levy rate will be something different than 11:30. But what this does is it gives the city flexibility in considering options for the 2025 fiscal year budget. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on the side of it.
All right, now, Mike, you so settled my gate mistakes. You said $1.30. I don't know how to audio portion of these.
11:30, I was getting corrected, yeah.
Uh, can I get a motion for approval? Miranda Horse, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Miranda Horse, yes. Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number 6670 entitled resolution approving, ordering preparation of plans and specifications, form of contract, notice of hearing and notice of letting, setting date for public hearing, authorizing the taking of bids and authorizing bid opening for the Broadway Street Improvements, Broadway Street Improvements, University Street to Independent Street. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. Really, what we're hoping to do with this resolution is two things. We're hoping to establish, or we'd like to establish, April 16th is the public hearing date for the project. And you're giving city staff permission to solicit bids for this particular project. And just to orientate everyone, the Broadway section of the street is this orange highlighted area that we have here. University Street is down to the south, Independent Street is to the north. And this area, but Central College that we have right through here, we do have a description of the proposed street improvement. It is important to note what is being proposed is a new brick street for this area. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the estimated cost of the project, I'd like to explain, um, this street is a high visibility street, and it has, you know, obviously, it's ever rolled into the Central College campus. And as a result, we've had additional logistical issues that we've experienced with the project. Not as far as driving up the cost, but it's caused some delay. What we've had, we've recently received an engineer's opinion of probable cost, just shy of $1.5 million on this project. Coming into this budget, we had $950,000 allocated for the project. Now, with that, um, what we're proposing is a revised budget for the project on here, and we have a total project budget counting the engineering of $1,666,000 for the project. And what we're hoping to make up the shortfall is, is use portions of our Pella Business Corporal tip funds in just an amount of $1,235,000 for the project. The remaining portion would be tapped in the road use tax fund of $425,000 to come up with the project budget. Now, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. I would also like to mention, based off our work today, that we believe if the city council were to dedicate $425,000 in funding for the road use tax fund, that would not delay or alter existing project's plan for the current fiscal year or for the budget that we are currently, will be discussing here very soon. That would be the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2025. And once again, I'd like just to briefly refresh the dates. If the council were to approve this resolution, we'd have a bid lighting date on April 4th and a public hearing date on April 16th. If everything went, the city council was able to award a contract on the project, we'd be actually issued a notice of proceeding on May 13th. And Daniel, I'll probably get myself in trouble on this, but the plans are is to have this project done hopefully before portions, a quick portion.
The bids get done.
Yeah, it is.
So we're trying to restrict it enough to finish from the south going north. So if there's anything to be buttoned up, sidewalks, driveways, anything like that, do on the north block versus the south. It is a real tight, with the brick inlay, that's a tight schedule, and everything's involved here. Sewer water, storm, subraining. No returns.
Yeah, and I just would like to emphasize with the city council, we admit there's a lot of logistics any time you go through a street that deals with the college campus on it, and there's a lot of people to contact with the project, and we've been spending quite a bit of time on that. But with that, with the budget increase, if you'd like to talk about it during the budget work sessions, this project would be delayed until the next, until calendar year 2025 if you chose to do that. And that's why we work with an alternative budget solution that increases the level of the total project budget up to $1,660,000 for the project as whole. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on the side of it.
All right, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? So move. Mr. Strylan, Carlstone, discussion? All right. All in favor, did I hear anybody? Okay. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Miranda Horse?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, ordinance number 1034 entitled an ordinance limiting zoning ordinance of the city of Pella, Iowa by changing the zoning classification of property located west of Fivefield Road, north of Highway G28. City of Pella, Marion County, Iowa, and this is the second reading. Mike?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be more than happy to explain this item. Mayor Ward stated, um, this request comes to us from the EPI group, and it's for property that just shy of 26 acres and just to orientate everyone. Washington Street, Highway G28 is located down here. West 16th Street is up here. The Prairie Ridge subdivision that we have, this existing location is right up here. The proposed location for this rezoning is this highlighted area right over here, and Old Ford is located right, right over here. Now, as far as the request that we're receiving tonight is to change the zoning classification of the property from A1 Ag to a planned unit development. We'll explain that here very shortly in the presentation. As of all planned unit developments, all of them are required to have a base zoning district. So that means unless there's an exception noted in the ordinance, the base zoning district would refer back to a median density residential zoning, which is what the intended project is. Now, let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as the development that we have this evening under the city zoning code, when we consider planned unit developments, it's intended for, it's really a negotiated process with the developer. And as for those projects, they're viewed as community needs for the city. And likewise with the developer, there's usually some complications when proposing the intended project. And in this particular case, what is being proposed is a product that is open to all members of the public, but it's really being marketed to individuals 55 years and older. They're looking at right size, their living arrangements now on this. Now, ultimately, if the developer intends to create 83 single-family residential lots, which would be for sale for market rate, the proposed development also includes a clubhouse as well as associated amenities on that as well. We have a picture of the clubhouse. Now, let's go ahead, as, as well as the patio home floor plan that we have. It's important to note, considering this item, that with the rezoning ordinance, everything revolves around Exhibit A that we see up on the big board. Developer's going to be required to develop the property in accordance with Exhibit A that we have here as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, as far as, when we talk about planned unit development and the negotiated process, if you looked at it from a city standpoint, housing has been a key strategic need for the city of Pella for a long, long time. The recent housing assessment that was completed in 2017 identified initial 966 housing units that would need to be constructed in our community by the year 2025 to meet housing needs. When we looked at those individual buckets, we call them, housing for individuals 55 years and older would account for about a third of that demand. And today, that's probably been one of the more challenging aspects is trying to get housing such as what we're considering this evening. So from a comprehensive plan standpoint, free city strategic planning process, we consider this as a project that meets those needs. In exchange for that, what the developer has, is requested certain waivers of the city's zoning code that are, that are mentioned in the zoning ordinance and movement through these before they're also included in the package. We're more than happy to answer any questions if the council has that. But keep in mind, the other exchange on this is the developer is obligated to develop the properties in accordance with the color renditions that are included in the package. We believe this will be a high-end housing stock as well. So that's kind of the trade-off that's being proposed this evening, but in summary, we believe that this is a key strategic, housing is a key strategic need for the city. In addition, housing for individuals 55 years and older is a need as well. And furthermore, it is also important to note that the planning and zoning commission mands it through this ordinance during January 22nd meeting. And finally, it is also equally important to note that the developers requesting waiver at the third reading of the rules ordinance this evening. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on the side of it.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
For? Miranda Horse, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call roll.
Miranda Horse, yes. Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Who sets aside the rules in place of the final rating?
Support. Miranda Horse and Strylan, any discussion? Brandon Horace and Strylan, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, may you please call the roll.
Randall Horace?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlestone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
She wants to adopt.
Support.
Brandon Horace and Strylan, so the motion is to adopt ordinance number ten-thirty-four, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, may you please call the roll.
Randall Horace?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlestone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, moving on, Abstract Bill's number twenty-one forty-six, can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
Carlestone?
Yeah, I work.
Hopkins? Discussion questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, may you please call the roll.
Carlestone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strylan?
Yes.
Randall Horace?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business she'd like to address, be addressed this Any member of the public have any other business that you would like to address council with this evening? If you do, please step forward microphone, state your name and address, please limit your count of these three minutes.
Karma Roof Ben, three hundred West Fifth Street. I just want to give some empathy to the coffee people, I don't drink coffee, but in regards to the Starbucks and all that stuff, I will give an empathy, I agree with totally what they were saying. And I didn't know if it mattered, the size of town that we have in regards to if a Starbucks comes, you know, if that has any matter to it, or, and also, if they have to agree for a Dutch front, are we still doing that? So they have to agree to that?
The design standards are a place for this building design.
Okay. Then, I have something else. Who do you contact in this town if you have a landlord who is not taking care of his tenants, and is, illegal stuff is going on?
This is not a valid menu option.
That is harming other tenants, and the police have been called at different times, and nothing seems to get done, no offense, police officers, and it's on, and I'm sure some of you probably will know, but it's on the two hundred block of Main Street.
Well, I, I would, we have our attorney here, so I don't know. Not, not, not at this moment, we're not going to discuss this in public, but I think you can reach out to find out what, what role the city could play in anything like that.
Or who you contact if the landlord's not doing what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, I, I have no idea, but I, we probably do have something.
I would say typically, it's a private issue between the landlord and the tenant, and it has to be taken to court. Whether there's something council can do, we can certainly look into that.
So I need to reach out to you?
You can, yeah. I don't know that I can do anything particularly, but I can certainly answer any questions and look into it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, then we will move adjourned to our policy and planning, item one, to discuss a brief budget discussion, and all we spent two nights later because we wanted to talk about it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we just have just a brief update, and I just wanted to give the city council notice, we're in the process of putting together a budget survey for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, and the survey is on a voluntary basis, and really what it's intended to do is assist city administration in prioritizing projects, and the focus will be on the city capital projects. And so what our hope is, is to get that out to the city council, and if you'd like to have input, or help me out, or help city administration and our team out as far as making a budget recommendation, we'd appreciate your input. But the survey is, we've targeted March twelfth for the survey, and so with that, we just didn't want questions arise, what is the budget survey, or why are we doing this on it? So we're simply open to prioritize project, and we'd like to receive your input before we get to the budget work sessions.
So you'll be sending that to each of us individually?
Yes.
I like it. Thank you.
Okay. It's okay, Mayor, if we can go ahead, please. All righty. The next item that we have is a proposed agreement.
Oh, just, I, I wasn't sure you were going on the next, is, anybody else have any other questions, if everybody understands what the plan is, it's fair of us to fill out.
Okay, okay. Go on. Okay, what we have this evening is a proposed agreement with the Cross Mental Health Region for Law Enforcement, and it's for the crisis intervention program on here, and we're going to ask Chief McShade very shortly to explain the program and the need in our community for it. But the intention is, is to foster better community relations, and that's ultimately the whole goal of the program with this, and so, Mandy, let's go ahead and look at the terms of the agreement that we have. Now, under the terms of the agreement, what we would be obligated to do is provide a full-time crisis intervention officer that would work, that would work with designated mental health professional. The CIO or the crisis intervention officer would be supervised by our police department as well. Now, the term of the agreement on initial term would be, start on, actually, this calendar year, and go through December thirty-first. Now, that our partner to the agreement would pay a hundred percent of the CIO's wages and benefits for the proposed three years of the agreement, so we have an option to renew for two additional years on this, so it'd be a hundred percent, where this program would be funded entirely by the crisis, and actually, Mandy, if we can go back on this as well, on, on this, it's Cross Mental Health Region for Law Enforcement on this, so let's go ahead, please, on here. So it's a three-year agreement, that would be a hundred percent of the cost would be covered after that, and it'd be a hundred percent the city's responsibility with it. And with that, Mr. Mayor, if there's no questions on the funding for the agreement, or the term of the agreement, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Chief McShade to talk about the proposed program and the need for it in our community.
Thank you, Mike. This is a very unique opportunity, we don't see grant opportunities like this very often, which funds not only the entire benefit cost of one of our seasoned officers, by the way, but also, you know, things that we don't really think about. What does it cost to train a new officer to fill that spot? What does it cost to outfit an officer? What does it cost for the academy? And all those fees are covered under this grant. In addition, they'll also need a vehicle, and so there's a cost of a vehicle and the equipment to, to outfit that vehicle. So this is a national trend, I can't give you how many years, but I would say, you know, at least the past five or so, we talk about the need to distinguish police calls versus mental health calls, and, and I will tell you, in my professional opinion, it's very dangerous to send a mental health professional out by themselves, but oftentimes, an officer is faced with situations that they just aren't adequately trained for on the mental health side, so this is a great opportunity to team up, not only a crisis intervention officer, which is a certified police officer in the state of Iowa, and a mental health professional trained to deal with these specific issues in our community. And really what we're doing is, a lot of this is just connecting people in crisis with resources, and de-escalation is a big piece of this as well. And so I think it's a, I think it's a great opportunity, and let's not forget that there's going to be a lot of behind-the-scenes action here, so it's not always just the response of the person in need, but being able to follow up on normal cases, such as domestics, a child neglect, partnering with our schools, so bringing this resource, and again, we're just connecting folks with services that are already available, that they just may not know or have a direction or path to. So I'm very excited about this, and I think the twenty-eight E agreement, which basically sets out those costs for year one, year two, and year three, makes sense.
Any comments, questions?
Did you say it was grant funding for this project?
Yes.
And the renewable twenty-eight E, there's a renewable part, I'm assuming grants will run out, and will eventually need to start large to this, this program?
You are correct, Dr. Carlestone, after the three-year period of time, that's when we believe it'd be a hundred percent the city's cost and responsibility.
And you mentioned as an advantage, all the onboard and training, obviously, the expensive part, the higher annual benefits, et cetera, going forward, do you think, are going to align with a regular officer, or is that a?
No, that's a good question. So what it would do, it would, it would increase our staff by one person, and we would look to fill that crisis intervention officer with a tenured officer, and that makes sense, it should make sense to everybody who's been here, you know, and is well-grounded. Then we would backfill that position with a new officer position, so there's a little bit of cost savings, we need to tenure offer Saturday in place with newer. Those one-time costs of year one are the cost to train that new officer, to equip the new officer. And then, of course, the vehicle is a key component to this, again, they're going to be as a team responding, and so, they're forty-hour work week, and, you know, at the end of the day, that officer still is employed by the city of Pella, and if need be, they can be used in, you know, virtue resources on the day-to-day operations as well.
So we all know there's more than forty hours a week, and you and I know all of it, mental health crises almost happen eight to five, so what about the other hours?
Another great question. So what this grant also does, provides training for our officers on the critical incident training. Right now, we only have a few officers who actually have taken this course, and this contract, if you will, provides for continued training, not only at the base level, but continuing training. And let's not forget that officers do have, you know, a, a good baseline knowledge of mental health crisis response and critical incident response. And so if your question is, are they going to be called out, not necessarily, but if we look and identify when those needs are, I think this covers that immediate need to respond.
Yeah, and not to beat it with a dead horse as you say in your mouth, but, will you, will it be an eight to five as the forty hours, you know, match up when the needs arise?
Well, we're going to look at our call response and, and see, you know, what times that best suits. What I suspect, with just doing a shallow dive, is there's no real, there's no set pattern, right? So.
Certain holidays, right, certain?
You would, you would think so, but we don't have an established pattern right now, so we'll just kind of have to see, you know, what the need is, and fill that need, but good question.
Okay, anything else, anyone?
Yes.
Move forward. All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Hopkins, Carlestone, all in favor, please say yes, opposed, no, may you please call the roll.
Hopkins?[1791.32]